Can you switch to the council meeting?
Gold is that all of those items. Public hearings are accurate. But just because I imagine you'll present a little bit and then just.
Yeah. Uh, people should do the budget first and then.
You want me to go live?
Um, I'm live already.
Okay.
You can, you can log in. Me, she could be the host. This will be the co-host.
Yeah.
But you can. So yeah, then I'll turn this off when I go over there.
Well, she is the lead.
Mm-hmm. But I'm not gonna go over. Yeah, you can feel up to. And like some of this chatting. Jeff, can you hear? Okay.
Yes, I can.
All right. Other focus is online. Not yet. Kind of surprising.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah.
Sometimes people think this board of adjustment meeting is about your. Sess. Tax value, if that's your question. How many representatives are here and have to talk about that soon enough to get people who come to the round meeting and then they're frustrated itself just. Tony staff helping out with that.
There are another meeting in there then?
It's for anybody with questions about that. Yeah. Yeah, and they're just work with you one on one because that's not actually on our agenda, but people often think it is. It was last budget meeting. Just. On the right hand side, you'll see the conference room.
So why do we? Oh, yeah, it's not good. Common confusion.
Item eight nine, will that add?
Yeah.
I didn't see that. Yesterday.
Yeah. We had a couple last minute items come in from Brian. No, eight nine was there or maybe not. Yeah, that was last minute.
Yeah, it was.
You can pull it off and put it at the bottom.
All right, it's six o'clock. I'll call us to orders for the Washington until December 1st. Thank you everybody for being here with us. We've got. Eyes and mullage hurts, I guess. Do we have any public comments? We can hear any public comment you have. If you're wanting to comment on the items that are included in our public hearing. We would ask that you refrain until that time so that your comments are officially recorded as comments related to that hearing. And those items are the truth and taxation hearing. Uh, some vacation of streets in the athletic field. And some minor code edits. But anything else you'd like to share with council, if you just step up to the podium so we can see and hear you. And state your name and residence for the record, we'd love to hear. A couple minutes, if you just keep it to about two minutes that anyone who wants to speak has a, has a chance. Anybody joining in?
No one online except Brian and Jeff.
All right, I'm hearing no public comment, which is just fine. Do we have changes or additions to the agenda by staff or council?
Yeah, just wanted to note that approving posting two part-time positions was added late. Um, we can move that out if anyone desires. And then the change order for the street improvements. Was added late as well and the final K estimate for the twenty twenty three street and utility improvements.
Which is already out. Yeah, okay. Thanks for noting that. All right, hearing other changes or additions? I'm not going to make a long presentation. I just want to say happy holidays to everybody. I hope everyone's had time. I know some people were working holiday. But we had time to re-group with your loved ones and. Very sorry to hear this was cultured for our last meeting that your board, your Greenfield Township Board lost a supervisor. Sorry about that. I suppose our provisions are hard to fill, so. Well, we've always would urge someone who's interested in, in that they find someone who's capable and willing. Uh, committee reports. Let's see utilities. Let's just speak.
Yeah, yesterday we met, um. I was asked to go over. Um, a lot of people are getting these lead. Postcards. There was three different postcards sent out. Um, and there was a bunch of confusion about. People thinking they had to actually do something with these cards. It's purely informational. Um, there's grant money involved. We're looking at old fixtures. Um, like old services water going into your house, so. Um, there's money available where we can do a little bit of research, check it out and. Possibly fund replacing them. There's not a lead problem. There's no like. Overage of lead in the water. It's, it's just a purely. There's a grant in place. It's old. It's lead is not desirable, so that's the purpose of the postcard. Um, that's about it. I'll go over something on the. Flat review when we get there.
Four thirty?
Uh, four thirty met. Uh, we meet every third Tuesday, um, of the month. We had quite a few items. Caroline, I don't know what you were gonna talk about, but. Um. We had a guest speaker, Lucas, um, from our, from the N R P's, the individual that we've worked with with respect to our permitting. For dredging for the barge terminal. Um, dredging that channel to be there and there and the area. Um, it was a, a lengthy and rather robust discussion with him. Um, we've been frustrated. It's been. A year in the making to get this one permit kind of settled out. And, um, Lucas was pretty. Pretty positive that we'll, we'll see that permit next month. Um, and that's kind of the last item on the agenda for that part. We're able to do a few things. This year, um, logging and things like that. So that process, that project is, um. Is happening. Uh, we've met. With the chamber director. This is in respect to the fifteen thousand dollars that typically the city of Wabashaw provides to the chamber. Um. This is the second time we met with them. We tabled them in the median meeting prior and we table again this time home. Our concerns are there's some. The position of, of the director. Um, is he's a, he's. Concerned about the, the viability of Septoberfest. And without a lot of data, to be quite frank, um. It was pretty much consensus on the port authority that we felt that that was an important event. For our community. Um, so we're asking for more data. We're gonna maybe meet with the board, the chamber board. So we have not funded them the fifteen thousand that they requested. Um, we. Funded ten thousand for the main street organization. Just for all the work that they do and they were able to really kind of spell out what they do. So that was pretty. Um. That wasn't hard to do. Uh, we approved the, uh, request for qualifications for a new economic development specialist. Uh, our current specialist is on a contract through January. And so we're considering options there. And the National Eagle Center, it sounds like that they are going to actualize that last four million dollars of the. Grant that we got from bonding several years ago. So that's where it's at.
Tony, streets. Hurks.
Good evening, everyone. We, uh, Street Commission met today. Um, they, we worked through the new heavy sixty vacations down in the old Bedlam Field. Um, approved that and, uh, we went through the final class today. We did have a change to that. Um, I'm not sure airline of that. Needed to get changed to ninth. Um, so we'll probably go over that. It's not a big change, but. But we talked about adding. So through the last few vacations. Of different streets that adds up time. And we don't have it in our P schedule, so the Street Commission, uh, wants to. Do like a hundred fifty dollar, um. Vacating application fee. Because we have Christie Simon involved, Brian Simon involved. You know, city staff time and usually it's probably five to ten hours per vacation. So we thought we'd start there and at least try to pay for some of our services. Um, we have a road up on nine hundred ninety seventh, um, avenue. It's in Greathill Township and then just behind that is a little city, uh, section for one resident. Uh, we've been maintaining it for twenty-four plus years. And. After some issues arose up there between the neighbors, we did some checking and. Basically Greathill Township doesn't have any record of it being an actual. Public road. City doesn't have, uh, many. Uh, proof that it's a city, city road that serves one. Um, city resident, so they voted to, um, send a notice to the, to the one resident saying that we're gonna cease. Any future maintenance and snow plowing and we'll do that for like eight brokers, so they are not trying to find somebody to plow a road with it. And then I'll send, uh, them notice on that. And obviously if they don't agree with it, they can come to city council and Street Commission. Um, and we got a street light request. It only serves one, um, person on a dead end road. Um, they felt that it's not a benefit to the city. Um, like a normal intersection would be, so that was not even voted on. Uh, died for lack of emotion and green light colors. So down on Lawrence Boulevard. We've had some different repairs over the years and some of the white bulbs are different. Lumen, so like five thousand, four thousand, three thousand, changes from bright white to yellow, yellowish. Yeah, so we're working with Ryan, uh, mom to kind of come up with a guideline. Um, so if we redo all those lights, you know, we want to pick out is it residential, is it commercial, just some. Policy guidelines for that. And that was it.
Slot two. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, Plan Commission.
Uh, we approved the XL Energy Substational by Fifth Grand Boulevard up by the hospital there. Uh, and then we had good discussion on short-term rental ordinance. Uh, we drafted one. I think it was sent out to a number of people. Um. December's meeting, we're gonna review and have a public hearing for that and then hopefully January first or January's meeting will be first.
Very good. Any announcements or? Issues in council, all right? We'll hear our administrators' report. If you agree.
Um, just a quick thank yous to Wabashaw Public Works for clearing streets over the holiday weekend and working through their first major snowfall, snowfall. Tony reported, we had fifty-three cars, um, parked on the street during the snow emergency and that made it very difficult to plow. Um, so we're gonna just try to keep sending out reminders, but it's kind of. Like, we're just trying to get the word out. If it snows significantly, you gotta get the cars off the streets. Um. Also, Wabashaw Fire, ambulance and police also have had multiple calls and two fires in the last two days. Um, and then we're gonna be undertaking performance reviews before the end of the year. The E V Charger, um, has been installed and was a hundred percent. Grant funded, um, thanks to Mary Funk and Scott Lee for their leadership. And Tony and Riley for the staff for installing it. That's it.
Great. Very sorry. I guess it's filed up in your report from the month of fifty-three cars. Um, our, our consent agenda includes the twenty twenty-six county highway maintenance agreement. Our December warrants, the November fourth regular council minutes gambling permit application for, was it the chamber? Yeah, Chamber, uh, Sean Van Dundee, uh, approving him to join the Wabashaw Fire Department. An approval for twelve thousand dollars in turnout here for the fire department for the, for twenty twenty-six. Within their twenty twenty-six fires operating budget. A resolution for the tier-two housing grant administration. I still want like being called tier-two housing. Um, and that'll help. Um, get that program administered through the port authority or you just administer it through the city.
Sure.
I don't think it doesn't matter. Anyway, um, street utility improvements for that final pay estimate that, that Caroline mentioned was added. And, uh, the approval for posting the two part-time positions for, uh, ambulance service. Anyway, we will show approve. Thank you, gentlemen. Good second from Jane. Can you further discussion? All who's in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed, say no.
I need to do roll call.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. We'll do that over again. Uh, who wants to call it? Fried Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moeller.
Yes.
Tyler always called it.
How about me? Yes.
Thank you. Point of order. Appreciate it, Jeff. Totally paying attention, I could tell. All right, so, uh, public hearings. Now we have these three public hearings. The first one is treatment taxation. And. Do you have any? Sorry. What do you want people to comment on?
Um, do you want me to do the budget presentation first and then?
Sorry for those of you who come to sit for the budget presentation, but when we ask the public to make comment on truth and taxation, it's kind of hard for them to do that if they don't really know where our budget is being spent. So Caroline will do that presentation.
Okay, I'm going to. Okay, Jeff, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I think his, the volume's low, but okay, just gonna. Do that. All right. So, um. So the, I'm gonna kind of try to talk to both places, um. For the budget presentation, I always like to start out with a few definitions, so we're, I'm throwing around terms and everyone's on the same page. We'll briefly talk about some of our major projects in the city of Wabashaw in twenty twenty-five. Um, talk about our budget process, talk about property tax levy and trends. Um, budget overview and, um. Capital Improvement Fund. And I have paper copies of the presentation there. Um, so one of the biggest questions that we get, um, on the phone is why did my properties, um. Taxes go up? And I have a funny cartoon about how everyone sees your house, um, whether it's the assessor. Who thinks it's a castle or, um, your buyer who, who says it's a piece of crap. So. Um, but why did my properties, uh, go up? One is the market value of your home likely changed. So that's gonna be printed right out there on your property. Tax statement if you brought it with you. Um, if you don't agree with the taxable market value of your home, the time to contact Wabashaw County is in April. Budgets and levies of various taxing districts, which we'll be specifically talking about in the city of Wabashaw today. Sometimes a special assessment might have been added. And so today we're gonna be talking about why did the city of Wabashaw's levy go up by ten percent? Um. This year, which then had different impacts depending on your property tax bill. Um, and how much your assessed value went up. And then what were the major city projects in twenty twenty-five? Um, just a few definitions. The budget is the amount of money that the city, um, spends every year and plans for. The levy is the amount of taxes that the city is collecting from taxpayers. And property valuation is the estimated market value that the county classifies your property. And then applies a tax rate to decide what your specific property taxes are. Um, so how our, um, levy is calculated is we take all of the expenses in our budget. Minus all of our revenue sources and the difference is what we ask, um, the community to pay in a general fund tax levy. Um, we have different separate levies for the library, the port authority, debt service. We will be adding on ambulance so we can separate that. Um, in our budget and track it separately in our capital improvement plan. So I think about three or four years ago, we set out our vision statement. Um, where we were committed to the preservation of our history, affordability, high quality of life, a vibrant tourism economy. And conserving our exceptional natural environment. And we set out four strategic priorities. So every year I kind of highlight projects as they fall under those priorities. So this year we did a major fire hall addition, um, that allowed all the fire equipment to be stored in one location versus various sections throughout town. Um, we upgraded an old ventilation system in our fire department, which, um, was out of code and, uh, not safe. And we replaced a floor drain and we were able to do that out of our capital improvement fund through savings that we had and we have generated, um. In, in our capital improvement fund. Um, one major, a project we started and it's reflected in the, the budget this year is repaving. Um, we call it a mill and overlay process for our most deteriorated streets. Um, and next year we're going to do significant improvements on Market Street and also replace the utilities under. Underneath the rest of the market, um, projects that we just started. In October, for example, on Skylight Drive is just, uh, an overlay. Um, we, uh, were grant funded to add riprap to prevent future, future erosion along the river. We had a new bike path lighting. We fixed a fence at Heritage Park and we moved Malone Park out of the flood zone. And we talk about those later, but the last four projects were all, um, with grants that we received. Under community growth and development, some major projects were again a grant-funded new skate park in the athletic field. We began environmental and engineering and demo work for our new highway realignment project. Um, which will reroute Highway sixty through the old athletic field. We talked about the E V Charger earlier. The Port Authority distributed eighteen thousand dollars in grants to five businesses to improve the exterior of their buildings. Um, and we moved the Malone Park Playground to Eagles Basin. Um, for building permit trends, um, this is twenty twenty-five year-to-date. Some highlights where we had a hundred and seven flat fee permits due to storm damage. Um, twenty-two valuation permits. Um, it's over twelve million, but a good majority of that was the school renovation. Um, we also, this is kind of. Blocking, I think, the view here. I don't know how to get rid of that. Um. We, we have the California Overland, um, truck wash that new commercial improvement is worth about three million. Six new single-family homes were permitted and right now we have six brand-new single-family homes for sale. So as you can see, we definitely had a slowdown twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Um, and then new, new construction has pretty, been pretty steady in the last few years, which is good. Um. All right, I just have to move this around. Okay. I do. Um, financial resources. Um, we have had a hundred percent increase in our ambulance revenues since twenty twenty-two. They've increased by two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars since twenty twenty-two this year. Um, we managed eight hundred eighty-eight thousand in federal and state grants. Of that, about three hundred thousand was for the flooding projects I was mentioning. Um, a hundred eleven thousand of a state grant went towards the new ambulance. We had forty-one thousand in library donations and grants that went through, went towards their programming. We got a seventy-five thousand dollar donation from W N B Financial. And our Port Authority is starting, um, an enterprise fund in partnership with the U S Army Corps. And that new enterprise fund generated three hundred seven thousand in net income. Um, which is going towards the construction of our new barge facility that we're building that will continue to generate income. Dedicated towards the Wabashaw Port Authority and Economic Development in Wabashaw. And then our investments earned about seventy-six thousand dollars. Um, and just under organizational strength, we had a hundred seventy fire calls. And we're gonna reach a thousand ambulance calls by the end of the year, which is the most ambulance calls. And that is in part because we've gone A L S. Um, advanced life support services to allow us to take, um, higher level, uh, inner facility transfers. But Ryan also has a lot of data that just our general nine-one-one calls are up this year as well, along with fire. So that's a sixty percent call increase for fire and forty-two percent for ambulance. Um, other highlights, I would say, um, our staff retention. We didn't have. Any turnover this year and I am knocking on wood because we know it may change next year and that's life, but we are. Very excited. No new staff, um. And so our staff are experienced. And, um, Joe was able to highlight some great work that Dan Metcalf did. Um, with his investigations with what, uh, was originally a workplace theft. As he went in and did the, uh, search warrant led to a multi-felony conviction. From, um, just a simple investigation, um, and this year had sixteen different search warrants. So now we're on to the budget process. It starts in July for us. On everybody's letters in the mail, we were showing a twelve percent levy increase. And now we, today we're looking at basically nine point nine percent or ten percent. Um, so when we started out, we are making a lot of assumptions and then we keep narrowing down that budget. As healthcare costs come through and we get more numbers, um, basically on what our trends were in twenty twenty-five. So I always like to break down what goes into the levy. So. A good percentage of, of the levy increase is due to wages and healthcare. That's on the top. We have a lot, uh, retirement sadly coming up for the, the library. Bev Hall is retiring. Um, so there's a little bit, um. Of an increase there, um, for our retirement severance. So there's a little bit of an increase there for our retirement severance policy in Wabashaw. And then 4% of that 9.9 is the new debt we're taking on the street project. That's about $64,000 in debt. And then not, not any huge changes with what we're putting away for the capital improvement fund. So there's a $274,000 levy increase since last year. And my calculations later on say that's about a $200 increase for a resident with a $275,000 home. Here's some of the budget highlights. 62% of our budget increases this year are due to wage increases. We approved a 4% general wage increase and then we do steps as employees successfully pass a performance improvement plan. I've done a pie chart of the wage increases by department with police is our largest department with about $800,000 in wages alone, having the largest amount of wage increases. And I also noted that Public Works is partially covered by the Utilities Enterprise Fund, so that's not included. We had a 20% healthcare cost increase, which was not fun. That added $79,000 to the budget. $20,000 just for Minnesota paid leave. That's a new statewide banding that we couldn't do anything about. 50% of that will be contributed by employees. So 20 contributed, 20,000 by the city, 20 from employees. The fire department requested additional maintenance costs. And their turnout gear is also expiring and no longer meeting the OSHA standards. So we have an uptick there. We moved out of the main budget to Main Street and the Chamber. Can you, okay, I got it. And we decreased our park maintenance line by $8,000. So the net expense increase was 327,000. That's about a 7.6% increase. The levied amount is lower at about 250 because we also were able to increase revenues. So here's our revenue page. We increased our revenues by 150,000 to 7.3%. We were able to add in additional ambulance service revenue due to numbers that Ryan has as of November for the year. We're getting a little bit more in police state aid. That's that Minnesota paid staff contribution there. The Port Authority is taking on costs for myself and Tyler. So there was a revenue increase there, a bit of an increase for fire state aid. And assuming, we're assuming about a $10,000 increase in township revenue. Here's our budget summary. Thumbs up or thumbs down? Do you want me to go through the detail or keep going through the highlights? Detail? Okay. Okay. Oh, I have a bunch of notes here. Just trying to explain if someone's category went up a significant amount, we just noted why. So. Um, and then just noting again, the anomalies a little bit in the revenue is that Minnesota paid leave HSA contributions. Like I said, ambulance revenue is going up 13%. They also requested additional amounts in salaries due to the need to cover more, more hours and services. Um, and that's a big change I'll talk about later. We always like to do the Southern Minnesota City's tax rate comparison. How do we sit between anyone, everybody else? Just a note on definitions again. Is what is the tax rate? The tax rate is the local tax levy divided by the total tax capacity. So when the assessor figures out what your city taxes are, they take in Wabashaw, our proposed rate is 75%. Multiply that by what your tax assessment. So I think what I noted is average levy increase this year was 7.45%. We were at 9.9%. Again, we did take on that new street project and new borrowing, which accounted for 4% of our costs where the rest were just general wage and healthcare. I did highlight a lot of Greenfield Township. They are here today, just so you can kind of see comparison. Greenfield Township being very low, but they're not funding. You know, they don't have a large staff or funding police, et cetera. A lot of small towns like Plainview ourselves tend to be higher. Caledonia is small, but a smaller tax rate. I have kind of dug into budgets. A lot of it depends on, do you have a police force? We do. Do you run an ambulance service? We do. You know, are you able to have a marina generating hundreds of thousands of dollars like Lake City? Or electrical utility? Some of those communities do. I think that's why the Port Authority came up with kind of another source because we, we know as we want to diversify our revenue. So. We will send this out in everyone's property tax bill. What this does is take each department's revenues, their expenses and put that, puts that into a guess of what do you pay per month? So again, just highlighting, you're paying about $50 a month for policing services in Wabashaw. $10 a month for ambulance services, about $30 for Public Works. And then our city hall includes planning, my city administration, council, everything else that doesn't fit in a specific department. As you can see, debt service is about $13 a month. I put together these historical graphs to talk about levy percent increase by year. Wabashaw tax rate by year is interesting. So the tax rate is reflecting, is our tax capacity going up as our expenses are going up? And the levy is just purely a levy change per year. So talking about a few trends that have led to these increases are general inflation. Another major impact is our police revenue and expenses. As you can see, our police revenue is pretty much flat in terms of aid we're getting from the state. But the cost to maintain a police department has increased. And that's mainly due to wages and the wage, the market changes for the police department. Another thing that's changed is we have transitioned from a volunteer only service for the ambulance department. So back prior to 2016, we had one paid ambulance director and a fully volunteer staff. That model no longer began to work in the 2019 time. And so we've transitioned to paid staff. We've, we've also added advanced life support system, paramedics essentially in 2023 to increase revenues. And currently there is no reliable aid from the state of Minnesota to offset costs. So you're just looking at our general levy trends there for the ambulance department. So I just, I hate to pick on police and ambulance, but those are definitely have been a factor of, as we've discussed in the years. So what are we looking at for property tax impact on a $275,000 home? We're estimating the city tax increase only would be again about $200. We're at a 75% tax rate and our net tax capacity created, uh, uh, increased about 4% through both higher assessed values, but also some new construction in Wabashaw. Um, lastly, these are just our capital improvement fund projects for the year. We need to do some downtown line striping. We have some savings from emergency management. Some ADA improvements for the fire hall for when elections are held there. We have a police squad car that's due for replacement next year. We've, we discussed at prior meetings, but our server is no longer working for our safety, security needs for the city sidewalks, some savings there, the turnout gear that I mentioned and two Lucas devices are on a payment plan for the ambulance. Something that I'll be recommending is that we were, we are contributing quite a bit to the CIP, but we're going to probably have to push out some projects in, in the coming years or identify grants. So I'm just noting that next year I'll work with staff and, and see what we're going to have to spread out a little bit to keep the CIP solvent. We also had some discussion regarding a one-time CIP contribution from the debt savings for, for the street project. We've invested that into the CIP. It needs it. But if, if there's discussion later, if we move that out and apply that to just a levy savings, it would result in about a 1% difference. So now I would open it up to questions and discussion. And I think what we're going to do is for the audience, have you speak into this microphone? Then I'm going to mute this one and then go back to that computer. So.
I know. Sometimes this live meeting, sometimes everyone's just here to listen to that.
No one's new guest. We have an observer. I'm assuming they're here to observe, but yeah.
If you have never done that before online, there's a little, you left your mouse hover at the bottom of the screen. That little menu will come up and there's a microphone on the far left. Just click that so that it doesn't kind of splash through it. And then you'll be able to be heard if you're in council chambers. Call for that again, just in case it takes you a minute.
Okay, I'm going to switch my phones here.
I can't hear you.
One second Jeff. We were mixed up mics. Okay, now we're on. Okay.
Joe, mic them.
No, he just put it here. Someone takes that. This, the, I don't know. There's a good afternoon thing.
How can I be dead?
Did you get your computer overheated?
I don't know. Okay. No, I just see the agenda. Okay, there are no further public comments on this one. We'll close the public hearing at 6:37. Okay, our next item is the Greenfield Township and City of Ambulance Contributions. I know we've got members of both of those. Both City Council and Board here.
Oh, we had two more public hearings. Did I skip one? And then I don't know.
Oh, I went around two directions. I'm sorry. Vacations of portions of streets and alleys. This is the one that Tony referenced. So as many of you know, the, the old athletic field will be newly developed as a, a new alignment of Trump Highway 60 and then further developed. So those street vacations have been recommended by the street commission. And we would welcome anybody's comment on that item as well. They belong to some of the original 1800s planning of the city, but have never actually been realized as streets.
Here's a map. Oh, if you can see that.
Anybody online wish to comment about the street? I didn't say what time we opened through 6:38. We opened the, the public hearing. Anyone online wish to make comment about the street? And I'll call one more time for anyone here. The time just. Well, we'll just close. Yeah, the public here. It's still 6:38, but I'm not hearing any public comment. And the final one, final one is some various city code minor edits. Just some redlining to our code and that requires a public hearing as well. So we'll open. Feels weird to open this next public hearing in the same time. There it is, 6:39. We'll open that public hearing now. If you have any public comment about the ordinance language change. I'll call again for anybody online. That wishes to make public comments. The general categories were some updates to liquor license, terror gambling permits, and then taking some of the water rate schedule out of the ordinance and putting it into our P schedule. I'll call one more time for any public comments. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing at 6:39. Sometimes those take a long time. They'll go roll through and prepare them. Maybe that. All right. So thanks for your patience. So now we have this, our treatment and taxation approval of our budget. So if you heard the wonderful presentation, thank you to all the staff for all the budget work throughout the year. We really are very lucky to have all of you. And now we would need to adopt a resolution about our 2026 levy. As Caroline said, this current budget represents a 9.9% levy increase from 2025 to 2026. And then she stated for a person with a home valid at 286, 286,000, that would mean about 200 increase, 200, 200 dollar increase in their city taxes and their total tax bill being around $2,000. Yeah, go ahead Dean.
Yeah. That please relieve item. Was that, is that something?
No. No, we just hadn't highlighted it in the past.
Just to show that again.
Increase.
You had mentioned that 4.4% of this levy is the street 20.5. How far out would that be going over your levy's data?
I think one thing we discussed is it's, there's a one-time savings this year that we plugged into our CIP. But yeah, basically it'll, after next year it'll be steady. So, so, so the 4% we're seeing is our debt payment plus 30,000 additional invested in the CIP. Next year we'll take out that 30,000 and that will be the debt, debt payment.
I move to approve resolution 57-2025.
Approved by Tim. We have a second by John. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have one question. Just regarding the 20% health insurance increase in the budget. How much, what was the final decision for how much of that's being picked up by the city employees?
I don't have those exact numbers. We adopted a policy that the city pays 80% of your healthcare of your family and 95% if you're a single. So I think the, the net result was that now and moving forward, if there's a 20% increase, there's going to be an automatic cost share. But I don't have the exact numbers for this year, Jeff, because we weren't paying 95% on a single before. We were doing 90. So impact of the budget was pretty much, it didn't, it didn't give us any savings because we also adjusted our calculations.
Council set that policy like in October, right?
Yeah, right.
The way I kind of describe it from an employer's perspective, Jeff, is I want to be policy driven about that because you know, to attract good talent and retain them. I don't want this to be something that comes up at the very end of the year, every year. It's sort of not good for us and not good for anybody, anybody that's on. You know, to attract good talent and retain them, I don't want this to be something that comes up at the very end of the year, every year, it's sort of not good for us and not good for anybody, anybody that's on staff. But also, it gives us this opportunity to think about that individual rate. And and it's, you know, there's an economics to it, it's like, if I, if I can get on, get ninety five percent coverage of my individual, well, then maybe my spouse can pick up our kids, maybe. Maybe they look for a way to take on some of the the shared family cost. So I think that's, I like that very much that we have that out there. I don't think we were too dissimilar, we looked at a lot of communities, it didn't, we weren't, that didn't make us a real outlier in any way. So that was discussed, I think you might not have been here for that policy change.
I was there, I ju- I just wanted to point out, you know. The, you know, someone on social security and Medicare, you know, we got a big two point eight percent cost of living increase and the city's getting basically a six percent. My Medicare premium went up eleven percent. And my Medicare Advantage plan went up about sixty percent. And, you know, you need to, we need to keep this in mind that, you know, the rest of the world that's paying your wages and salaries and benefits, you know. We have to also suck up the cost.
Yeah, I I get it, we also, we've got people in their working years preparing to be on their Medicare supplement at some point in life, so, you know, this is. This is their time to have that economic, you know. Grow up in their own household so that they can be ready for retirement, so. That's how I see it as an employer, so. Any other questions or comments before we call a roll vote?
Breen Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, I really appreciate how this budget work has gotten a little bit more. Like we're not trying to make difficult decisions in December and extra meetings all on myself, so it's really, really well done work.
So good news, we won't have to meet again, we will send this to the county.
Everybody, thank you, those, this, these last. Few years with these kinds of reports have been really helpful, it's been very important for us.
And good reference material for all us, I mean, looking back at the prior year.
The presentation tonight was actually, it was really good. Yeah, yeah.
And that's on the public, it's on the public record now, so I've often referred people to this meeting, even if they're not typically a viewer of these meetings, because it's a very good overview of the services that. And of course, you know, we talk about picking on ambulance police, those are not supposed to be revenue generating services, those are public services, so.
Central services.
Yeah, yeah, we know why you have value. All right, so now we have guests from Greenfield Township as well as Kellogg. Something, this was a. Opportunity for us to discuss with one another of what we're discussing at our November council meeting. Where council recommended that staff take some action, including a letter which has not been done, that's completely, what do you want to help us?
Just, one of the things that I didn't highlight in the budget was that we did have. We had assumed that the Greenfield Township would meet the expected. Contribution of what we requested of thirty eight thousand. So that did get pulled out of our budget last month, and I think that we. We had talked about a letter being sent out. There was a Herald article, there was discussion at Greenfield Township, there was some discussion at Kellogg, I believe. Mark here, I asked him to come because last time we were saying, you know, can we talk to him? And I think I just noted that I also sent in a property tax calculator and according to my calculations. It wouldn't have been a big increase on the taxes, about. Twenty dollars a year additional from what was approved. But I do know that the consideration for them was, I think they were sitting at like a fifty fifteen percent levy increase and didn't want to go above that. They have tons and tons of tax base, et cetera, and it's relatively small amount. And so I just want to make sure it's not just the levy amount, it's how much did your tax capacity go up? Because if homes get built in Greenfield Township. Or tax capacity gets left, if you, if you don't levy enough, that everyone's taxes are going down actually, but anyways. So what we would like to know is what your perspective is, if you're willing to share that, Mark, on what. Your plans are, I think, on our request for per capita ambulance payment. We've definitely gotten a lot of feedback from our residents. That they want a cost share for ambulance. And then Sue McNally also is here and hopefully willing to answer questions, so. Mark, does that sound good to you?
Welcome, Mark. I think Mark would would entertain a group presentation if anybody wants to join.
And I see Addis Harder is in the audience as well, and. So, did you appoint a new member to the board or they're here as well? Awesome. One thing I'll commend Mark on is we have had consistent attendance from Greenfield Township at the board meetings. So, go ahead, yeah.
What are you asking?
What are your plans for our request? I guess number one, we know that you levied for twenty thousand. Is there a plan to use available savings for next year to meet our full thirty eight thousand dollar request that wasn't levied? Do you plan to get up to the amount next year, what what questions do you want answered still? Have you, have you guys voted on it yet, I guess, you know?
So, does everybody realize that nobody has to give any money to anybody?
We do. We've been working in a spirit of collaboration for years, I know it was before.
We don't have to give anything. Okay, and at our board. With this group of people behind me, right, one of the two guys. We, we try to look at, okay, if we need this extra money. You guys need their money, what it gets to, we gotta raise tax. We're always trying to figure out how we don't raise taxes and put tax and everybody to death. Because that's what's happening. You guys know. These guys know. So we're trying to figure out what we can do to help you guys out, that's why we came up with a fair amount. Consideration of sixteen thousand dollars out of our levy to raise it and four thousand dollars in our general fund. We can only afford so much. You have that calculator there, that's fine Danny, but still point this, we gotta raise taxes come up this month. We don't have. Nobody's got it. So. Again, you guys are saying you got a shortfall on this ambulance service. Right?
Right.
Every year.
Every service is in trouble, yeah.
So, what are you guys doing to raise that revenue up so you don't have it?
We, they have raised revenue.
They've raised revenue a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
They're still the negative.
We will continue to be because Medicare Medicaid is not paying what they should be paying. And that's just, that's a fact, so the question is. If, is it a service that we deem necessary? Is it a service that Greenfield Township deems necessary? And if it's not, we know what we need to do, we can make changes or we can do different things. So that's the question.
For instance, what?
We can give up that territory.
You just give it up?
Yeah, well, we'll have to give it to somebody or someone.
Goes to a private service.
Yeah, go to a secondary service.
So, you can just, so I mentioned, just give us up.
Yeah, we. It's a process.
You're required right now to take care of the ambulance service in this area.
Yes, right, yes.
And in order to give up, so I'm gonna clarify that, so. You can just call the state, we're done, if you guys here to claim, you go ahead and dig it.
That's the start of it, okay.
So let me clarify a little bit where I was told. Okay, this is from people that are above us and no more than us on ambulance service. One, you can't give us up until you got somebody else in place to do that, okay? And they have to agree to take this on. And you have to give, give it up now. What I've been hearing from this board here and these guys back here, you're the same thing, you need our money. So, I guess you do need it or you don't need it. Can somebody clarify that? Because that's what we're getting, we're getting mixed signals here.
We can certainly reduce our PSA. Okay, so that reduces our need for as many calls, is that simple? We reduce our volume, reduce our expense.
So, how about another option?
So for a long time, there's this spirit of collaboration amongst all the townships and this was this, you know, just discussion.
Yes, the state doesn't appreciate what the ambulance service does out there.
Correct, yes.
I agree with that.
That's for sure, yeah. But we, we have a joint powered board option. The attitude early on was. Essentially from several townships, we expected you to come and ask for these contributions, we're not really sure about a joint board, you have all the. You have all the responsibility, we're not sure if we want that or if we just want participation from a cost share, and those were. Twenty eighteen conversations, I think, so. We've been progressively working on those relationships to make sure everybody understands what's at stake, which is to say a very robust ambulance service that's gonna show up with ALS service. When you need it the most, and that's the direction we've headed. Because that's, that was preferred, that was the preferred option.
So, back to what I said, I said, what if, what about another option? Well, we could do a taxing district. But what about we just pick the P and L, which I asked for the other day, and we look at that and see what we got for the workload? Anybody think of that?
Well, it's, I mean, if you had the ability to analyze that and come up with a solution, everybody would be knocking at your door.
How about, I just simple math, look at your expenses out there and the P and Ls, where are they? Labor. You got five hundred thousand dollars for labor. For the year. Revenue was up to date, I don't remember where it started, which one started? There's four hundred thousand dollars for the revenue, that's kind of what we've been averaging for the last three years. You got five hundred thousand dollars for the expenses already. For labor. Do we have the right people, do we have enough people, are they the trend people? I don't know.
I can tell you right now.
It's so hard to get, it's impossible to get staff.
I can tell you right now, we would need more staff.
To handle one ambulance or two?
Two.
Okay, you're only required to do one.
I can tell you right now, we can do one, that's fine. But all of a sudden, somebody in Greenfield Township needs a call. Now you're waiting thirty minutes, well, whatever. In our area, now you're waiting thirty minutes.
Two are out at the same time constantly.
I I would say on average, it probably.
Ryan can, Ryan can highlight.
The costs are going this way.
I can tell you.
Revenue is going this way.
You know what, you know, here's the fact. You know, one, two, three of us were on the ambulance service and each of us probably served about twenty plus years on the ambulance service as volunteers. That volunteer model is gone. It's not happening anymore, you know. Our age group that had the time to volunteer doesn't, can't volunteer anymore. People coming up aren't volunteering, it's just that simple. When we were all volunteering, our call numbers were three hundred, four hundred a year, now we're at a thousand. So we have a thousand. We can do a couple things. We could scale it so back so far, we could do like a call call and not schedule anybody. And hope someone shows up. To take that ambulance call. Right? Or we can staff it like we're supposed to staff it, that's the expectation of our communities. That's the expectation in your neighbors, is when you call nine one one, that ambulance comes. Right? Is that the expectation?
I would say so.
Right? How do we do that? And we've been dealing with this. I got on the service in what, in nineteen ninety nine, you guys were on about the same time. Ryan's been doing this for twenty five years, this isn't a new thing. Our call volume continues to go up. Voluntarism continues to drop, there was a white paper that's done on this in the early seventies, it's not, it's not sustainable. So here we are right now, and we're asking the townships that we serve to pitch in. We've got townships that are willing to pitch in more than what we've asked. So we're asking you to pitch in out of that same balance, that same dollar value per cap. Than the others. So you're telling me that that's not gonna work?
We don't have the money for it. We're doing best I can.
Taxes are still historically low compared to Wabashas. I mean.
What's wrong with Wabash versus us?
My perfect example is. Gulf course and Arrowhead blocks, it's the same exact value home. It's two thousand dollars a year taxed differently, they're just on the other side of the road from each other. And I mean, you. Greenfield residents aren't using the pickleball courts and the swimming pools and the streets and and all the other services in town.
So we just raise taxes and keep going?
Maybe they should have kept up historically and it wouldn't be such a dramatic. Increase, we're, we're at a point right now where we, we have to fund this differently. So the, the funding request is, is larger now because we need more revenue now around this. It's essentially on the city, the residents of the city of Wabashaw. The property owners of Wabashaw, it's on their backs to service the ambulance for all the townships.
This question was asked also. We're about to hospital, we're input dollars. Donations. Fundraisers.
We received all those things, this, the hospital isn't a source for extra revenue and it's not, that's not a model elsewhere. Brian, did you want to say something related to a question that was asked that you could answer?
It's bigger, going down to one of the areas, put it into perspective. So far this year, we had a hundred and four calls where we've had two calls at the same time. In fact, over the weekend when I was here on Sunday, we had seven calls, we had two calls. Twice where we had two calls going on at the same time, and one time where we had three calls going on at the same time. Our call volume is going up, our numbers of two calls happening at the same time, today we had. A time where we had two calls happening at the same time. So if you want just one ambulance staff, great, I'll do it, you know what? Then you're gonna be waiting for Lake City, Winona, Plankton, it's gonna be waiting a lot longer if our first ambulance is not done a call. And no, if we can't come to an agreement on the amount of money that can help sustain and everybody pays their fair share. My option that I expressed is that we just give up the ambulance service altogether and let somebody else come in and do it, and I can guarantee you. I live in a community that has private ambulance service and I can tell you, you're not gonna get the same service you're getting now. So, you know, that's my option, if we can't come to an agreement, I say, you know, if the city doesn't want to keep fending with the whole bill, we just give up the ambulance service altogether. So.
Brian and I also just believe like we got, all be in it. Obviously, I think Sue asked me, like, are you really gonna pass one community and he actually said Mayo literally does this. They go through one city to give up the territory they didn't want to give up. But yeah, in front of us, if we can't all get together to support it is. The, it seems like it's not viable for the taxpayers to fully subsidize it, so option B and C are. Try to cut people out, involves a process. But so, so does involving a process to get somebody else to take, oh, us over, it's a negotiation, so at that point, we'll be negotiating to say. Wabashaw's willing to pay for those services, you can staff us, but so and so and so and so, they're not gonna participate, and so then whoever takes us over. Would, would probably assume the communities that want to pay in for the ambulance service, just taking it further, but. If there is a desire to have further control over the ambulance. I would suggest the joint taxing district, then we give up basically the ambulance service to this new joint board. You know, you guys can all be on the board and you'll make.
Everybody gets it, yeah.
This is very simple, you put all the liability in the city of Wabashaw's hands. He has, I think I'd still be his manager, but anyways. It's like, we're grappling with this, having the meetings, but we would give that up and and so we're willing to do either one. To me, watching, listening to the radio today, it doesn't seem viable that. There's not enough demand for ambulance services for us to have our own ambulance service, definitely given our location and the amount of tourism. But.
And our aging population, and some of these, some of these are demographic shifts, right, people are in more medical complexity. And.
Yeah, I think, you know, we talk about the hospital, so the one thing, the one positive about the hospital is, is that, so when we transfer out of the hospital, that's under a doctor's orders, so we get paid at the full rate. So the more we can get, the more transfers we can take, the more we get that higher rate, the guaranteed rate.
It's reimbursement for healthcare, not reimbursement for transportation.
Exactly, it's very, very different, so. We, there was a page down that direction today for a pretty simple call. That, you know, the city essentially lost money on. That's just how it is.
I get all that, I notice the taxpayers get that, but how do we all make this work? We're giving tax to them, everybody just raise taxes and keep going?
I don't know.
I don't either, but that's what I said, we gotta make something on level three, we're, we're offering up twenty grand, it took us six months to figure that dollars out. And that was twenty grand, and we got told in our meeting. Give your fair share, well, we raised our taxes to get to that point, plus we took money out of levy. We're doing our fair share.
Not quite, no. Not based on, not based on the same population, relying to everybody else's number, everyone else is getting the same per capita request and they're coming to the table, so. Not quite.
We voted this Greenfield Township President Sue at the board meeting, there was like ninety eight percent people voted for a full increase. So.
That's like fifty four to four or something, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know that's not everybody, but the room was full and everybody was for it, so I don't know.
What that was fifty, it's thousand.
Well, it's not a referendum, but it's, it's, it's a telling proportion of people who do want the service to be viable.
Yeah, I think, we're, in my mind, we're to the point, we either do the tax.
We're, in my mind, we're to the point, we either do the taxing district or we petition to. Have Greenfield service by a different ambulance service. Um, but if we, if we put all this work in, it's gonna cost us. More money to set up this taxing district. And for those of you who aren't familiar with this. Essentially, what it is, is all the townships and the city. We form a separate board, so the city no longer is in charge of the ambulance, we have a board with voting members. Everybody pays taxes. To fund this ambulance, so you would have a, I think it's a line item on your ta- tax statement. For your regional ambulance. Bill. Um, so we, if we pay all this money, it's gonna. Take attorneys. We gotta set it up, all of your town boards have to vote to participate. So if we go through all that work and then we come back to the same point where you just say, well, we're not gonna do it, then we've. We've invested all that time and all that money. Into trying to make a better system and, and now we're back to where we were. So.
Have a better system, you don't have a solution.
We do, yeah, we do, yeah.
Raise the budget on, on. On the ambulance. And the revenue is not raised.
It's not a revenue saving service, it's a, it's a.
What are we gonna catch up with, just keep taxing the people?
Yeah.
Just keep taxing them until what? Then they can't afford it anymore?
I, it, I mean. We gotta vote different, I guess, then, because.
Gonna do.
Look at the state we live in, I mean.
Do we, can we handle? The degree of emergency service that you want to disform, maybe we can't handle that, maybe we have to step back a bit.
Were hurt, it's not that day that we're down, we're not gonna serve, you know. If, we, none of us has, has control over when we need emergency services or.
I understand that, but do we need the extent that we have, do we have to have that? All the time.
Well, I think it's like police, do you wanna live in a community without twenty four hour policing?
If we can't make a budget, if we have to tax our people to gap.
Yeah, I mean, we.
So public safety and public health are two things that.
They are a part.
They are important, so.
To what degree?
Well, my point is, you know, are you willing to determine? That on this day, there's less staff. So someone doesn't get the heart attack. You know, taken care of or the overdose or whatever. I, you know.
So we're not really like this. We're gonna, we're gonna tax by rolling the dice. Because there may be somebody somewhere that needs that extent. Extensive of emergency.
That's public safety.
What we're doing. And I have a good question, at what expense? We go with the board. Joint Board. The allocation per community is determined by the board or it's balanced out. By.
It's a tax.
It's a service called to the.
I think the state's a formula.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said the state has a formula for it, so.
Community is gonna be charged what the board determines the load for each community will be, correct?
No, I think it's taxes, like, uh, 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 your tax basis.
Okay, so the community doesn't have a choice, though.
Correct.
It's set and you're gonna pay.
I feel like, if you're part of.
Right now, your people wanting to make the choice of what they want to pay. Versus being told this is what you will be paying, correct?
So, and I think that was some of the lack of appeal to that possibility.
But there, it's not gonna be thirty eight thousand of this taxing district. It's gonna be paying for ambulances, paying for possibly fixing the building, for staffing, for our. Our all sort, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be way higher than thirty eight thousand dollars if, if we.
My point is.
Way more.
That's my point. I don't live in Greenfield Township.
Yeah.
My taxes are, my property taxes are going up a thousand dollars in twenty six.
Yeah.
Almost a forty percent increase. Year on year. And we wanna talk about whether we're gonna choose. To make a payment or be told what the payment's gonna be. Same symbol to me. Cooperate.
That has been the spirit of.
Yeah, we've been, we've been trying for two, three years now. To make this work. Ryan, what was the cost of that last ambulance?
Uh, well, before the grants that we just got, or the two grants that we got, it was three hundred and four thousand, and that was for using. Some of the equipment that we had, that it took thirty six months. Um, for to.
What's the cost of a? Monitor, heart monitor, X series, thirty five?
The last one that I got was thirty six thousand in Germany.
And you use a heart monitor to determine if someone's having a heart attack, when then you can provide them with. Medications that can sustain that heart until they can get to a cath lab, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, otherwise you're getting anyone.
Cause they have a life expectancy.
And you just change oil on the one you got rid of and had a pound mile of. Well, to me, that's ridiculous. That is just totally ridiculous.
They don't have much to put in there, uh, strip of revenue.
Well, and then we bought another Ford five.
That's so suddenly fatal.
The state also has regulations on those vehicles for inspections and everything else. That after a certain timeframe, they're gonna pass inspections that have to go.
But that study was worth less than?
I don't know, what was that with the, the inspection, that like the air ride system on the old ambulance was gone? I mean, there was, there was things that were added to it on it that couldn't be fixed anymore because of the parts.
Lights quit working.
Lights quit working.
We have, we were shelling out thousands of dollars in trying to keep that ambulance going.
There's.
Keep one going, clarify.
With the number like Greenfield Township puts it on their, the next voting ballot, for like, you know, like, everybody vote.
We can't do it, we can't, we just looked into that, we, we loved it, I know, yeah.
Like, for next year, you can't.
We can't put it on our ballot.
They just don't. Count thirty.
Our relations don't allow us.
But townships, townships can't do that.
No. That's what our journey goes.
Okay.
And what, how much financially is it gonna help you by dropping us?
Well, we're gonna have to cut staff then. If, if we drop the area. I mean. Less calls, I, I don't know.
Less expenses, calls, less.
I mean, no, we, guys, come on, you guys can do this for me. There's sixty calls at Greenfield Township in one year, and you're gonna get rid of.
Sixty in one year?
Sixty in one year in Greenfield Township, that was the list that I just.
That numbers you really could have, that's, that was probably sixty last month.
I don't know, what's the total? Township calls now, Ryan, when you have.
Just the year to date?
So. Twenty twenty five so far, you've got thirty one calls in Greenfield Township, twenty twenty four, there's thirty nine.
I didn't make this up.
Hundred sixty four, and twenty twenty two, there's thirty nine.
Ryan, this is a piece of neighbor you gave me.
Okay.
That's the cards in twenty five.
Yeah, but that's due to date, when was that? Right now, I said there are twenty one calls.
My thing is the amount of calls that you're talking about down in Greenfield Township, you're gonna de stack. That's what we're asking, is it feasible to do that? If you have Greenfield Township or you don't have Greenfield Township. You got twenty grand to work with, and if you're gonna, like I said, with the P and L's, we're showing there's five hundred thousand dollars of labor there. I get it. But. Can we train them more that we can make more money, like you were talking about? You know, get them. And Ryan, we talked about that too. The tur- the turnovers and, and stuff like that, where it's making the money, you know, obviously we can't just take everything, we gotta turn some, some stuff down. But are we getting the right people working there? And like Paul said too, do we need to decrease a little bit, do we got the right people, so we got the right, I don't know.
What did Lake City just do for their? Step for medics and EMTs? Their base rate for EMTs are, is now.
Cur- currently their base rate for EMTs is thirty one dollars an hour, that is almost as much as a pilot.
So. In order to be, in order to be competitive and keep staff from turnover. We should be competitive with our neighbors, right? Alright, what do we pay our EMTs now?
Um, starting here, I'm going to resign to the board or something.
Twenty dollars an hour. And what are we paying meds?
Uh, they're starting at twenty two.
Twenty, thirty dollars an hour. So we're already doing all we can do.
Our staff is all good, everybody on this gets paid, we're good with that, we're all good.
They're good?
No problem.
Yeah.
And we know who they are, we know that if they're, they can make the most money for us.
So.
Cause sometimes you can train somebody to make more money. We all know that.
So, wh- what do you, what do you mean, like dosing somebody drugs that they don't need in order to?
You're, you're, you're at the mercy of the emergency, right?
You're at the mercy of the.
Sometimes it's a death.
If someone has more training that he can do a better job. Dollars, and something, I don't know if the ambulance service, eh? That's what.
What?
What? With the dosing and all that, gone.
Well, it.
Well, we're not saying forward somebody's price, I'm talking about is the right people in the right spots.
So really.
In the ambulance service, I don't know.
We do, because there are employees, we, we've hired them, okay? So Ryan is an exceptional example of this, it's not so much that you can control the emergency and what the patient needs, it's about what their insurance will pay for. And so it's really a billing expertise, which Ryan has in spades, he's, he's generated.
Get to it, I'll maybe. The driver. Do they have to have any qualification on that, is it more than just a driver, is he got some other kind of chain that he can do dual purpose jobs, I don't know.
I think we're at an impasse.
These are questions that really should have been passed a long time ago.
I asked that question last week and I didn't get any information of the who the people are with her.
I think, I think we're a little cocked, the line of questioning.
You've got it, somebody that runs the ambulance service, just like we have a fire chief, just like we have a police chief, just like we have a city administrator. And a, and a billing director. We put faith in them that they do the right job, we have the opportunity to review their budgets. Some of us who've been on the service and actually worked the budget, pay attention to it, some of us are in the medical field, emergency medicine outside of here. And we understand those budgets. We understand a forty eight ninety six schedule or a modified Panama schedule or a full Panama schedule, we, we understand all that stuff. And so when we're talking about. You know, maximum. Capacity for a team member.
Efficiencies.
Yeah, you know. They're there. They, they can't not.
Truly respectfully, I, I feel so privileged to sit on a council with half of us being in the medical field. Three of which are medical E, EMS, Gene was our director, you know, we have a great depth of experience. Looking at this service and trying to help Ryan and his staff be as efficient and creative as possible. Ryan, maybe you want to share a little bit about, you know, there was an effort to collaborate better with the hospital to make our paramedics more effective as essentially community paramedics. There's all kinds of experimental models out there, but there is nothing unique about Wabashaw's ambulance service. Struggling to find the revenues to such a broad service area, and we do have a big service here, and just like everywhere else, it's an aging population, so. We're dealing with, we're dealing, that's just a, that's just a fact of our demographic, we stay in Minnesota, a little older than the national average, Wabashaw County's older. Than Min- Minnesota and Wabashaw is older than Wabashaw County, so this, you know, I don't want frail people thinking that they can't be taxed more. To provide the emergency services that they need, these are not large figures, this is not taxing somebody to death, these per capita increases are not large. They are what's required if we're gonna have a participatory model. They're not large.
I don't know, whoever said they're being taxed to death, I can take your assessed value of your home. And I can tell you what our request was for you personally. So when I did it on a four hundred seventy thousand dollar home, we're talking. Are you in Kellogg or Greenfield? Sir. Greenfield, okay, we're talking additional tool, of how, how, what's the assessed value of your home? Okay, we're, we're literally talking seventeen dollars. Per year that we're asking on your three hundred fifty thousand dollar home to fund our ambulance, maybe less. On a four hundred seventy thousand dollar home, it was. I just put it in here, another twenty five dollars per year. I mean, as we mentioned, how much do you spend in beer, coffee? Liquor?
Eggs.
Tables, I mean, all of our costs for, I mean, anyways.
Don't get me wrong. Thank you for the twenty, right? But we really believe. As other communities, other townships have believed. That paying. That, that rate. Half of what. Everyone else is paying on a per person basis.
Yeah.
And we, and we've talked to the residents too, besides the fifty people who are there. And we got. A lot of different mess, messages, but the point being is. We can't keep dumping and, and giving more money is what they're saying. And we can't be raising taxes every single year and every single thing, give our fair share, that's what we agreed to, and that's what we did.
Is there, is there any interest in this taxing district? That we're talking about, there's no interest that I.
I don't know that. That's not my fault.
Yeah, you told me there's.
Tax, we should be up in the state back row and, uh, why don't you?
Well, Ryan can speak to that too, he represents the.
Said, Captain, I'm all, I've been over them all for years, I'm watching all these issues.
You got help from other people doing it or?
Yeah, we have, Minnesota Association that I'm a part of, they have the American Association.
I know you're essential, I just can't believe they can't.
Yeah, and we, we, we participate in the League of Minnesota Cities, this, this, all of the lobbying agencies for small cities, they are all completely aware of this issue, as well as the cost of. Of police, these are services that are critical and, yeah, they, they, the cost helps pace. The tax base increase in our communities.
It's unreal that they don't take the necessity.
So, so we're. We all, we're all the same boat. This, the state isn't helping on any, we all think it's important, we all know it's important, but again, we can only do so much.
Okay.
And we're sitting here trying to work with you guys, trying to figure this out. But we don't have all the checkbook, we never did.
I. I would say, Mark, just we looking at your numbers, think you can do as much as the city of Wabashaw's doing for our ambulance.
We just lost four big parts, that didn't help us.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Like, that's, you're no one.
D and R bought one and. Or Vangers bought three.
Well, according to my. Calculations, your tax capacity overall still increased since last year.
Might not be under yet.
Okay.
We're still only at that certain level, but, or like.
I think we, we're done.
Yeah.
How much more we can.
Unless, unless Kellogg had anything to share, I mean, you had a question or a comment.
You had this study. And it said, don't, you should have your collection agency, you beat that, you did that.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, good.
Yeah.
Everything, how come you don't have all the coding on the ambulance services like sure?
It's a completely different thing, so you're, again, you're dealing.
They said to do that.
Well, that's, that's what we are gonna do next year.
Okay.
So.
Just wondering.
Um. Next year. For purposes of what we're attempting to do. Um, what that was recommending is separating the ambulance service from the rest of the city's financials, so it's separately audited. And that is what's gonna happen next year, that was the one thing we hadn't done from the study, and thank you for reading the study. Um. Uh, was separating its financials, and then that makes it easier to pull reports for Mark, cause otherwise he's getting. You know, a hundred line items, so.
Yeah, there is, there is a study, if anybody, it's just, me, if you just look it up on the, on the city's website, that has looked into some of, some of the questions you've asked, Mark, and, and a lot more.
So if we get a donation of. The balance of the money that you guys want, that's okay, right, you'll claim that for ours, right?
You could, yeah, if you get a donation for that and, and then pay it, I don't see why not.
Okay. It, you know, Mark, it's, this, you know, here's the thing, this isn't. This isn't just one year, right, this is not gonna change. Our, our call volume's not gonna increase.
But we're trying to do one year at a time, get through this.
This year, this year?
In progress.
We'll move for the next one, you know, I think we need to look at special tasking, taxing districts, we need to look at. I don't know how else to do it. You know, this, what we're doing, going through right now, you know, Greenfield Township, Kellogg, Wabashaw. It's happening in the cities as well.
That went all over.
You know Cottage Grove is dealing with this right now with Newport and. It's the same thing. It's the same problem there, and they're struggling, and it's a town of Cottage Grove, which is a massive. So. We go to this, we go to the Capitol, there's a bu- a group of us from the council that goes every year from the Port Authority, Ryan goes. And we talk about this stuff every single year. We talk to our lobbyists about this every single year as well. That doesn't stop any of this from. It's still affecting us. You know? It's just that simple.
We'll go to our lobbyists and try to do the same.
Yeah, I mean.
The same legislators for most part.
Same legislatures, so. They gotta get behind it.
Well, I was just concerned, so that, when you guys first came and wanted the money. You took, so we give our first, the city of Kellogg. Gives the first responders nine thousand dollars into their budget for their trains and their.
Can you come to the podium, Sue? Just that's a request we got in the online.
So three years ago, you were okay with the fact that the city gave. The first responders the nine thousand dollars in the budget. We did, I think the city gave. Fifteen hundred. And then the first responders made a donation also for some of our trainings that would get through the Wabashaw ambulance, and that was good. But then in the paper, you just said that you were gonna drop Kellogg in Greenfield, and then you started following up with.
Well, a paper sometimes picks up the tone of the conversation and sort of reports it as fact, that was the spirit of the discussion is. What's going on? Why aren't, you know, why isn't Kellogg here? Why isn't Greenfield here to discuss this? This is a serious issue, and we're all coming up on the end of the year now that. You have approved our budget, so I can't speak to figures, but.
So. Kellogg is in a unique position that they fund a first responder program. That actually doesn't serve the city of Wabashaw. It ironically also serves the Greenfield Township, the city of Kellogg. Miniaska.
All the towns.
And their program costs nine thousand dollars. So they are already levying nine thousand dollars for EMS services, so we. Compromised in the early years. To say. Let's, I think their first responders gave, like she said, gave the Wabashaw. An extra contribution to increase the amount. Now what we're saying to Kellogg is. We wanna keep it consistent for everybody. You owe us. Fifteen thousand dollars. My proposal is. To the Kellogg City Council, if they would like our help. Including their nine thousand dollars and our per capita requests. To Miniaska and everyone else, we're fine with that. We divide the population you serve. By your nine thousand dollars. And then get the full contribution from Kellogg. That's fine, because you're doing the same thing we are, which is providing EMS services. For communities not contributing to.
So it wouldn't really. But we give you the money, it's.
Oh, but it would be for your service, for your, for your, it would just would, it would just wrap those two requests together as one, and hopefully get a more stable, planned. Part of everyone's budget. Part of their budget calculation every year, not like waiting to be asked, but it would just be part of a singular.
But that aside, we still need fifteen thousand dollars from Kellogg. But if it helps. Your first responder service should be included in also a per capita request. You know, if they're willing to ask. Greenfield Township for more per capita. We're struggling with our current per capita.
I I am a first responder, and I'm gonna say the majority of that nine thousand is probably payroll. The ambulance gives us free trainings. Ninety-nine percent of the time, and helps restock our bags.
Right.
But so that was Mark's biggest concern in regards to. Wabashaw's is the amount of that's payroll, so. That should be something that should also be taken into consideration there. I mean, you're.
Three, well, three years ago, we did donate. From the first responders. We did last year, we didn't even. Kinda got dropped, so I don't know, I mean.
I think we, what we, what I'd like to do, Sue, is talk to the Kellogg City Council. If that's available and get others of us there to understand. What would they like to see? Are you guys, I think what was in your budget was three thousand dollars towards the ambulance, and our request, I think, is twelve thousand to fifteen thousand. Twelve thousand, I think, yeah. So.
Cause I don't know, yeah, I'm just raising it, I think to three thousand.
Yeah, cause it actually was in the Kellogg budget at like six thousand when Chad initially proposed doing this, and then it sat there and didn't get used. And then it got re-put into their budget.
Back to John. All right, anything further? Otherwise, we do have more additional business.
Is there action on this, or we just, just discussion?
It was the discussion we were hoping to have last month, so we appreciate you being here.
Feel interested in having us at your next meeting, Mark and Ed. I had talked to Tom about that to kinda. Answer more questions or. More discussion.
I don't know. I don't know if we're gonna get anywhere further than we did tonight, so.
All right. So we'll put this on our. Next meeting agenda, and I think what we're looking for from Kellogg and Greenfield is what are your plans? For twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Um, just so we can, basically, we're looking for some certainty as to what you're willing to do. And then once we know, then we can make plans with what we're gonna do. You know, because I think hopefully we all agree that. The current. What we're doing now, or I guess in the opinion of the council, we. We've we've gotta make a move, because we've been trying, we've been doing. Requesting this for three years, so.
Well, it works, been going on since before I was the mayor, because I remember participating as this sort of interested. Citizen, and it was twenty twenty-eight, so, or twenty, sorry, twenty eighteen, right? That's, that's been some time. So, for anybody who came for this item, we really do appreciate you being here, and we do not expect you to stay for the rest of the agenda. We won't be offended if you need to duck out. Of course, you're always welcome to stay. Um, our next order of general business is the twenty twenty-five street improvement and the change order and the pay estimate, number one. Thank you guys, drive safe. Uh, there was a description about these, um, slight changes, the culvert work, replacing the driveways along Skyline Drive, and some minor quality adjustments. Subsequent quantity adjustments. And the pay estimate. Number one, at the amount of six hundred thousand, six hundred and one thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-six cents, which can be all the construction work. Thanks, Mark. All the construction were completed in twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
I'm moving through.
We have a first by Tim, second by Gene. Any further discussion?
We did receive some questions online with why the work was postponed, so. Brian's here to answer those questions, but that is explained in the item summary, so.
Yeah, I thought the summary was good.
Yeah, so for anybody interested, take a look at the item summary, and Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Nope, just happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
Any further discussion? We'll call for a roll of vote. Roll votes are painful, I don't know why.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
I have, I have flashbacks to COVID when we had online city council meetings, when we did all our votes. All right. And our, thank you for your patience. The crowds are here on this final plaque review. It sounds like this is not the streets this this week. Did you wanna say anything about the change or everything? Probably gonna take care of it.
Wait, ten more.
Final plaque review. Oh, yeah, no, sorry. I just reordered it. I just reordered it to get people who are coming to.
Do we have Christie here on this item?
No.
Okay.
Request from utilities, um. That, these are being split into individual units, though individual owners, um, we're requesting that each one be individually water metered. Or the water. Utility be the sole responsibility of like the the building owner. So there's, so there's, so there's one person paying it. Who's responsible, or they all have a separate meter for their units. So that there's no issue with who's using water, who's paying for it. And that's what the utilities commission asked for.
Go ahead.
You put in the water lines, we had two in there. You automatically took the one out and said, this is big enough for the whole building. And. Now, when we discussed it with our attorney and stuff, they, Jeanette said. That it would be better just to put it in the HOA to be.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Of not fighting over pay, it's not so much. That's not, thank you for your time in advance.
And all the utilities are split already.
Okay. Wonderful.
Boop this group.
I don't, um, are you able to pull up the picture of what?
You could, if you go to Wabashaw.
You want, you don't want me touching this? Well, I mean, I can describe it too, there you go. Um, like in the. So if you look at that map. There's two jettos that. Are supposed to cover the two driveways. Well, the crowds want to pave. The green space in between. Oh. Leave the drive over curve there, but pavement, so all we wanted to do, and we talked to Chris, oh, during the state commission. We wanted to make that permanent area, the whole rectangle to cover. The two parking driveways in that middle section. And it's just basically, it's gotta go to my clarity, the wording's gotta get changed. And then they're responsible for. Snow removal, parking, you know, they can stripe it, they don't have to stripe it, but it's under their control, because it's. Not same street. Or that email. Alright, so. Oh, yeah. Doesn't show it on. Okay.
Okay, so you can leave the curve, yeah.
Yeah, we got our stand.
Okay, you said a category over.
Uh, they're gonna dig out the grass area, and they're gonna pave it three inches asshole, but it's there anyway. We don't, we don't have to regulate it. But basically, you know, in case we have to do anything in there, we need that permit to cover that entire area.
Sure.
Say like. You know, I don't know, there wouldn't be a water line, but I don't know, the city power back there or. You know, if, we wanna make, make sure that.
Is that still in right away?
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah, that, alright. And then we kind of, you know, we talked, okay, we're gonna, we wanna do the whole area. And they they knew why, we knew why, we gotta talk through it. And then like if the other, you know, anybody else wants to do it, we're gonna do it the same way. So we're all on the same page through that back alley, because it was kind of funky back in the day. So I don't know if we need to, you know, if it needs to be approved tonight.
Without amendment?
You, yeah, you have to vote, you know, to approve the final plan, contingent upon the map that I gave Caroline, I just. Extended that area. And then they're responsible for. You know, the maintenance, uh, snow removal, parking. I think that was it, I put whatever they in that email.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, um, string that, but. Um, everybody understands what Tony was explaining?
And there's a light, there's a street light back there, so. They know that we have to dig up the streetlight wiring, we'll dig it up, we'll fix, you know, what we disturb, it's no different than any other right way. Um, that's the only thing. Um.
They had amended my motion to include Tony's.
Go first from John, go second from Dean. Any further discussion, anything from you, John? No, we share, it is, all right, hearing that, we'll have a roll of vote.
Okay, guys. Green Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen. Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
And me. And me.
All right, Duran, yes.
All right, thank you for being here and staying so long. We appreciate you guys working with city staff and. And being so patient. Okay, so we are on. And five, the approval of some of the summers, right, and she studied. Again, we have a very good summary of this by staff. I appreciate the summaries that we can reference this in a more proficient manner, but I I did read the whole report and. Appreciate all the comments.
Yes. Yes, the public comment was interesting, um, as I highlighted, I thought the public comment was encouraging us to stay focused on some of the wastewater projects. Versus recreation coming in second. Um. Brian, can you summarize, I guess, what you would like council to know as the key takeaways? And I'll also kind of reference what it found for the impact if we develop Highway sixteen.
Sure. So the per, the study had two main purposes. One was to do some modeling to better understand exactly what the flooding conditions are there from a. Elevation standpoint and where the water is running and that type of thing, and that's mostly for when you apply for grants to the agencies that they understand that the study is based on. Good, current, accurate data. The second part was to look at, um, basically areas in the city that flood. And what impact it has on your city infrastructure, so your parks, your streets, and your sewer and water infrastructure. And then we worked with staff to identify, you know, what are the issues in those areas that are flooded with your city infrastructure? Um, the section that talks about the localized resiliency improvements, and that's in the table in your summary there. Those are those kind of smaller bite-sized chunk, uh, types of projects that you could implement. Um, the the other purpose for the grant, I should back up, is this will allow you to apply for implementation grants from the MPCA. So it's the same program, they do planning grants, and then they do implementation grants. So now that you've completed the study. You could apply for implementation grant funding for some of these, uh, any of these recommended improvements. So that table nine, it has that list of improvements, um, kind of the smaller bite-sized chunk improvements that you could look at. Um, as Caroline said, uh, probably the the sewer, uh, infrastructure improvements would be something you'd wanna focus on, the. Manhole waterproofing and I N I improvements. Um, some of those things, uh, you also have the the park improvements with the bathrooms and. And the boat ramps and the campground electrical pedestals. These are all things that. Um, staff has to deal with on a regular basis, uh, when it floods, receives issues with when it floods. The the bigger issues that looked at, we did look at some of the major flooding areas and looked at options for how could you protect the city from those those flooded areas. Again, city infrastructure and some homes. Uh, as Caroline mentioned in the summary, some of those are just prohibitively prohibitively expensive, uh, very large projects, um. The exception of being of the alternative B two, which was. Basically, the Highway sixty project and what you're planning to do with that, did analyze that to see what impact it would have on flooding. Uh, it basically has no impact on flooding, just the highway project itself. You do have some issues if if you do choose to fill, uh, more significantly to the west, um, with the redevelopment. Um, but there's some that has to be looked at in more detail when that's designed. Um, the other, uh, major improvement that we looked at, um, that is feasible is the wastewater plant flooding. So when you get larger rainstorm events, or interestingly, when you have a a spring snow melt, um, combined with a rainstorm. And there's some, you know, ice and snow blocking some of those those drainage ways that exist there now, the wastewater plant floods, so. That was a relatively inexpensive project in the scope of things here, um, to do some ditching that would prevent that flooding, so. Those are the recommended improvements, um, and the recommendation would be, um, to accept the study. And then utilize it going forward to apply for grant funding and prioritize some of these things based on, um. On how they impact your infrastructure and what what you feel is important as a city.
And I was looking for feedback on that from this group, but Brian, would you be able to like. Poke us when those grants come out, and then we'll remember to kind of take a look at this?
Yep, the grant. The grant cycle is actually open right now, uh, through, I think, another week here or something like that, and that's for the. The, you know, the studies that were done last year, basically, so. Probably a little too quick for you, but. There's a, we we hope it's an annual cycle, it has been in the past, but as you know, that's always dependent on. The legislature putting money towards the programs and and the programs continuing, so.
But this is the first step, so this is one of those where it was like a really busy time, and Caroline, I noticed it, we're gonna, we're gonna apply to this, but. We need to do the first ever, we're not positioned well, so thank you for this effort. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move.
Sit down.
Yep.
We have a second?
Sure, I will.
Do we have a first from Tim, second from Brian? Any further discussion or questions? All right, we'll call for a roll of vote.
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
Tyler, Tyler will be so proud that we do all those rolls of votes. He was good at it.
I know, he mixed it up.
All right, and now the criminal justice center lease for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty, it's the draft.
Yeah, I think the question for you all was.
We can let Brian go, right?
Yes, Brian.
Brian, thank you so much for sticking with us. Appreciate it.
You bet, thank you. Night.
Yes, sir.
We we budgeted for the yearly rent for next year already. We were currently at twelve thousand. They did some market research. And felt like. This was. Fair, um. Uh. Where we are for next year, so so I didn't, I didn't really fight it, honestly, because I think it's two thousand dollars, but. The question that seems to be up to date is how long do we want to lease in place for? And. They're suggesting it goes up by, I think, did I put? And they're suggesting it goes up by, I think, did I put it?
Percent?
Three percent. Um, we can negotiate. I think it'd have to be something, um. So.
That's really standard, I don't know if that's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Free standard.
It was at five percent before and they're act, they're saying to reduce it since they're gonna raise the market value.
Mm-hmm.
Reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, I, it is what it is. I mean, an apartment, a two bedroom apartment, eight, far away from thirteen hundred bucks a month, so I, I think it's pretty reasonable.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know.
I think you could tweet Joe and there's more office.
No one knows.
Whatever, we didn't remind the PJs.
Drawers, drawers. Are they sure? I think we can find a city location where people.
Do we want to do a longer lease length to commit to this?
No, I was, we talked about, can we get ten year lease at one point?
I would go with as long as you can get it, I mean, I would say five at the minimum, but if you.
Yeah.
You can get ten on them.
How about, how about a five at the ten? With, with a five option, a second option for five.
I think longer the better. It just helps to stabilize things.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you, how do you phrase that, five?
Five with a five option.
With the five option, I mean, they were willing to go long, but. Um, okay, we'll just, I, how about I do? We do ten with the five option, I think they're open to ten.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
We'll do ten with the additional five, so fifteen.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Alright.
Um, and then we're gonna go with three percent a year.
We need to make a motion on that.
Two percent.
I don't think that's unreasonable, I think so.
Yeah, motion.
I'll, I'll move, sir.
We're first, we have a second, John, are we, first from Tim, second from John, any further discussion? Hearing none, are you ready for another roll of vote?
Okay, yep, Green Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
Thank you, okay, and our final general business is our local option sales tax.
Okay, um. So. Okay. Um, number one, Eric did the study and says normally he charges a thousand dollars, but he'll waive that fee or accept a voluntary contribution from the city. I don't know what to do with that, um, because basically he acknowledged, he kind of went ahead with it without us ever bringing to. Say we wanted the study, but I was glad he did. Because I did get some more feedback on this, and at this time, I can say we probably do not have the support of our local representatives. And I've received feedback that an ambulance only proposal may be stronger in terms of demonstrating that regional impact. Um, but either case, we need their support. Um, then additionally, we got an incorrect estimate for the local sales tax, so I took the data he had. And went with the middle conservative numbers, but if we, if it is actually passed and we collect more, we just have, we'll hopefully be able to just pay off that debt faster, we can close out the tax, so. That's taken care of, I just needed to change a resolution. But I've also learned, I also have to mail information to the tax chairs with, with the, the data that would be in that report. Um, Ryan received some input on the viability of rehabbing the existing building, we, I, I did attach that response. Um, but roughly, we're looking at seven hundred fifty thousand to one point two million. But to fit the space, they need a second floor or revise the scope of the project, which again, plans for future rebays. Um. Okay, so, I don't really. I think John and Jeff and Emily were all there for the conversation with Pam, she needed more info. The information I got from C. Drostowski's office was. I'm learning that they may not even take off the tax bill this year, they don't have to, is what I learned in my administrator meeting. So, I think what I can do is present our data. But I didn't know if there was interest in. Just pursuing ambulance only if we think that's gonna be more viable, it sounds like it's a tough road either, either way. I think the thought was if you did ambulance only, you could just, you could still do the joint building, but the tax, I, I mean, that seems weird, I guess. I don't, I don't know if an ambulance only would be. Easier to explain, I think there'll, there's a clear cut regional impact there. With city hall and the regional impact of that, we can say we have a hand in pretty much everything, but most proposals that I've looked at. Are tied to a community center, a park and recreation center, a law enforcement office with a specific territory. There have been a couple cases though that did include, uh, like a public works building or a city halls more rare.
It's, it's just this stupid impression that city mall is some fancy space the public doesn't need, it's, it's a convening space for our public.
Yeah.
And for all the management that goes into all of our department heads, management of their apartments, you know, I mean, this is the, this is the central. Headquarters for all of our departments, it's such a funny perception thing, I don't know.
Mm-hmm. I think it's gonna be a tough road either way.
I mean, our study, our facility study doesn't, doesn't lean that way, so I don't. You know, you go ahead, Dean, I mean, this is, this is.
Well, first of all, do we, uh, do we need, uh, our representative, re- representatives from both chambers or just one?
Good question. So it's, it's gonna be on, it'll be on a house bill and a senate bill, and so. I think our representatives would have to. To, to get it probably through, they would have to sign on, they would have to author it or sign off on it.
As a companion.
What?
As a companion bill.
Yeah. Um, am I right, I'm right, yeah.
No.
Um, well, I think it would be important to submit this year, and that way we have it registered with the state anyway. Uh, so, if they come up with, if it's not done, if you're, uh, they can see that we're making an effort. And we, we need to read Smith, so that makes that was covered.
I think it's all gonna take time to educate Representative Alner, she was, she was there in general. Um, but she wasn't aware that there are provisions like that you could, she said, you know, what about people, what if people knew lumber, it's like, well, people aren't gonna drive forty extra miles.
And she's her health.
She's our health, yeah, we didn't talk, I didn't talk to her, the synergy.
No, and I didn't talk to him directly, but Margaret, he sits on the tax committee. And he doesn't like local option sales tax, so.
He don't, but.
Um, but what, what his response was is they are figuring things out, check with them in late December.
So. And what time, what's our timeline, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Late December, early January. I actually, by January thirty first, I have to send our justification of the regional impact that we're opposing, and that is contained in Eric's honor reports. But sometime in December, January, we'd also need them to sponsor special legislation, which we don't probably have, so.
I, I see, let's go ahead with it. Um, I think, uh, as far as, uh, what's more, uh. Attractive to the state, I think maybe just having it for me. I would like to go for both, but.
I just think with a city that serves as such a regional hub, county seat. City hall run out of a building that wasn't built for public.
Oh, I don't.
You know, I, I think there's a narrative there, because I think, you know, the idea that you're like contributing to an improvement at like Hastings City Hall with their magnificent historic building, that's different than. Trying to get our services aligned in a more efficient manner to serve the region, I, I think it's the, it's kind of like we described the workforce stuff, it's like this very pragmatic argument, it just, you just have to clarify the reality versus what somebody's proceeding.
I understand that, I'm just thinking of Steve.
Yeah, I know, we can always scale it back, but.
So the first part would be to get them to write a language?
It, there's, there's templates out there, the first thing is to give them.
I'm sorry.
Well, two things, I think I send this to the tax committee regardless. And then simultaneously, then they agree, so, I mean, we can try, um.
It's, you know, I, I. As we're all well aware, the better package it is, the better chance we have, is what you think for. Package. Do they?
I think I have to wrap the package using Eric's data, I didn't have that good of a data, like having his expertise to say, you know. He's, the placer AI data just is gonna show the volume of visitors that we have, but I think I added. I think according to Courtney, we have a hundred thirty thousand, a hundred thirty thousand visitors a year, according to his data, so I'll.
We'll leave them.
Yeah, it could be long, um, so I need to add that to. Um. I need to add more, more things, but I, I, that's, I guess, a hundred thirty nine thousand visitors, but, yeah, I need to flush it out. A little bit and really talk about what city hall does, because it's also the basement of the port authority, which focuses on business and stuff like that, so. Yeah.
What do you need from us tonight, then?
Uh, just affirm if we want to take to the legislature a combined building or ambulance only. And then just re, I just redrafted the resolution, so, if it's a joint building, the payback time is twenty three years. I think the old number was twenty, and then with the ambulance only, it would take fifteen years to pay off.
That's a base.
Fourteen.
That joint building.
Mm-hmm.
Drive.
That's what our study says, that's. Yeah, mm-hmm, okay, yeah, this is just, it's, it's either something we try to work on or it's a problem for another day, I don't like passing on big problems when we've invested energy and thought into it. I wonder if it can help, I don't know.
So do we need to move to?
Move to approve the revised resolution.
I mean, I'll make that motion, sorry.
It was second, first by John, second by Dean, any further discussion?
And just to say that's for the combined building.
Combined building.
Okay.
Do you need it into a Eric bill or?
Oh, what do you wanna do with Eric?
Well, valuable.
It's not on the agenda to put, we have to, is it on the agenda?
I put it at the end of the item, sorry.
Oh, you did?
Mm-hmm, let's vote on this and then we can talk about Eric. Um, Fried Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
I'm still mom.
Hey, Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um. I thought maybe half, five hundred dollars, I thought.
He didn't ask for it, but he also didn't have to work as hard because there's not as much data, so it was, it's not the same sort of effort that it might be for.
We'll do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fund five hundred dollars.
I, you don't have to, I, I just.
Okay, that's right.
Okay, alright, hearing nothing else on that, we've got the resolution, uh, to accept the donations, so.
Hey, we need action on those two public areas, don't we?
I was gonna ask that too.
Thank you. I'm probably, here's giving me all kinds of trouble here.
Well, we already voted on the truth, so the second one and the third one, we need to probably make a roll.
Portions of streets and alleys, we have a motion.
I'll go in.
That was first by Tim, second by Dean, okay, any further discussion?
Fried Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
Thank you so much for noting that, just waiting for that minute to pass and nobody speaks, just, is, my brain just doesn't compute. Alright, the next one is those minor code edits, we have a motion, I'll move, so, motion to approve, second by Jean, I think, or thirsty, uh, any further discussion? And they're all.
Fried Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Duran.
Yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Did you get some?
Sala.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have a last motion, uh, to approve the donations, we have a hundred dollar donation to the fire department from John, Emma Anderson, to fireworks. Uh, the American Legion, post fifty cents of the American Legion and American Legion Auxiliary, didn't say how much.
It was like four fifty.
Wonderful, that's wonderful.
I move.
First, second. We have a second by Brian, and we'll roll call vote, one more time.
Green Meyer.
Yes.
Woodley.
Yes.
Walrake. Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
And yes for me. And any other, you've got your financials, any other announcements that we don't anticipate needing, yes, there was, sure, go ahead.
Uh, is it possible to get the minutes of the meeting sent with the water bill?
Hmm, they're really long, it would be a very large mailing.
Well, could we get, why real, well, you're sending it out anyway, the, the bill you're sending for the water.
It would be so many pages that it would increase the cost of.
It would be a big, big pattern, but they're online every month.
How many older people have a computer that go online?
There's, there are.
They can request the minutes, but.
Yeah, you can request them.
So, why can't we have a short version of it sent out with their water bill?
Minutes by their very nature are formatted in a particular way, because it's official public records, so we don't have sort of a summary of it. That's never been asked, though, now that we have AI, I wonder what it would look like to make a summary of the minutes.
Sounds like loose.
Let me give you an example of what happened, a while back. All of a sudden, we had marks up and down the road inside town, either Brighton County or Angelique and Rusty right over here. The city, or the county, uh. I don't know who it was, city people were out, hooking stakes in along the whole boulevard. And everybody asked, well, what are they for, I don't know, I don't know. Even the person that worked with the street committee didn't even know what it was. And what it was is they were going to be putting in trees in there. They said, well, you have a right, if you don't want it there to tell them, well, how can you tell them if you don't know what it's for, who to contact?
Yeah, that.
We really wanted that in our minutes, yeah, that's just.
I respect.
What?
It's the city boulevard, but usually, we put the states in and we give it a few days and then people contact us. Then they'll say, what's the state for, we say, it's a tree, you don't have to take it, and they're like, well, no, I don't want it. I mean, but otherwise, we gotta do a door knocking, or guard a door, I don't know.
But you know, the thing is. Why put them there because the fact that you were complaining, or people were complaining about the stuff getting into the sewer? The grass, the leaves, different stuff like that. And where do you put the tree, right on the boulevard, so where's the tree gonna drop? End of the street.
They're all over town.
Yeah, I mean, that's every city's forestry plan essentially, because that's the land that we have.
Right?
Yeah, we, we need to, we, we're adjourned. No, we didn't.
No.
That would be something you could take to the street committee, that a motion, we have a second here?
Yes.
Green Meyer.
Yes, marks.
Woodley.
Uh, yes.
Walrake.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Moyer.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.